Meeting to order, could we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no justice for all.
Okay, tonight, we have Donna here and Feedmore, West New York Farm Market Program. And is it?
Elise.
Elise, I'm sorry. Is it from Feedmore, correct? And you're going to tell us your idea of what you want to do with the senior center.
Sure, let me turn it over. Sure, good evening, everybody. My name's Elise Berger from Feedmore, Western New York. And our plan, we have a new program going on at Feedmore. It's called our Farm Market Program. So we're launching it in numerous sites at this point. We're partnering currently with the Family Help Center in Buffalo, also Jericho Road in Buffalo as well. And we're looking for more partner sites. And we have been targeting a lot of our congregate senior dining sites. So East Aurora partnering with our Meals on Wheels program. And Clarence, we are also planning to partner with Chikdawaga and Hamburg as well. Those are going to be the four that we're going to start with. And basically, what the Farm Market Program is, is we have one big truck that opens up on the side and we sell produce off of that truck. So it's extremely affordable produce that we would sell right out of the truck. Anybody from the area would be able to come, approach the truck and purchase whatever they would like. And an extra program that we were trying to launch here as well is a senior grocery program. So we were trying to target the seniors who would come and eat at the congregant dining site and provide some sort of extra produce to them. This program, the Farm Market Program, really developed out of grant funding that was awarded from COVID. And the senior grocery program was kind of put on hold during that time. So our idea was to merge those two programs together to provide vouchers to the seniors who come to the congregant sites. Donna would be in charge of distributing those vouchers to the seniors for $5 apiece for them to be able to purchase whatever types of fruits and vegetables they would like to through those vouchers. And then anything additional that they would like to purchase, we accept credit cards, debit cards, cash and SNAP benefits as well. But like I said, it would be open to any individuals that were at the congregant dining site, but it would be open to anybody in the community as well. Our plan is to come once a week for about an hour in length. But that timeframe is flexible and we still have not decided 100% when that exactly would be. We're thinking in midday, when most of the individuals are coming to eat lunch. Probably, I think we said, right after lunch would be the busiest, right as they were leaving. And then promote that through our social media page, through our website. So again, anybody would be able to come to the truck and purchase whatever they would like. I see you have our memorandum of understanding as well. There are some things in there. If you have any questions about anything like that, I know we provided our certificate of insurance. But that's kind of what we've got if anybody has any questions.
I would just have one on the length, you know, is it a contract or an agreement of term? Or is it anyone can walk away from this at any time?
Anyone can walk away from this at any time. So the question was about the memorandum of understanding. There's a part in there that says Feedmore can terminate this memorandum of understanding at any time. I know one of our other sites wanted that to say Feedmore or the host site could terminate this at any time, which is absolutely the case. So if we were seeing that there wasn't a lot of clientele or it wasn't working for whatever reason, we would absolutely be open to discussion on canceling or changing that.
That was, that was one of my questions is what is your anticipated participation?
That's a good question. It's still, it's still such a new program. We like to see at least 40 individuals coming to a site. We're only there for about an hour. So in order for it to be, you know, an effective use of our time, we like to see at least 40 clients per day or, you know, customers per day. It really depends on, you know, how many people are here, how popular it becomes.
But you've done this in other places.
Yes, yes, we have.
You know, you can maybe gauge a little bit, I realize that.
Sure, yeah, every site's a little bit different. We try to have the market when there is other types of programming going on so that there are more individuals that are, you know, onsite at that given time. I will be honest with you, we haven't operated the program in the winter months as of yet. So I think the winter months, you know, clientele might go down and the summer months it would go up. But again, that 40 is around our sweet spot.
Is there a particular day of the week, Donna?
We thought we'd stay away from the days of the farmer's market, which is on the Wednesdays, of course, and Saturdays. So we could be flexible. You know, most of the days right after lunch are busy. Our afternoon program is coming in, so we thought the combination would be good. So I would think realistically 40 people, you know, we're getting, you know, 30 people for lunch and whoever comes in, you know, afterwards, or people may just stop by once they know the program is there.
And you have a place picked out in the park.
Well, I thought maybe I'd put it next to my shed. We thought, we thought maybe, we thought maybe back in the corner by the dumpster and then that area, you know, just and try it. If it works really well back there, if it doesn't, maybe something more up front or, you know, we can, we can be flexible with that, too. I just thought it would be a nice, excuse me, a nice addition to our programs.
Any other questions?
Is there any need based component, those vouchers?
So sure, so the program is intended for our congregant dining seniors. So we would, you know, offer it to anybody. We would leave Donna to be in charge of how she would distribute those vouchers. But surveys that we have done with our congregant diners in the past have said that the meals that they eat onsite are the only meals that they eat that day. So our main concern and the start of the senior grocery program was to fill those gaps, you know, and provide things later at night or, you know, on weekends and things like that. So we would really leave that to any host site to determine, you know, how those were distributed. But we would be able to offer those to anybody that is a participant of the dining site.
And we can, Jolene, we do have a handle on that a bit. You know, we do, we do know who would be more eligible or.
And it would be those participating first in the congregant dining.
Absolutely, yeah.
What is the need for restrooms in those facilities would be the senior center? Is that what the plan is?
So the question about need for restrooms? We will have two individuals on the truck every day. So we have our driver and then our farm market assistant. We'll only be here for an hour, but it is kind of a long drive from Buffalo. So they may need to use the restrooms, you know, one day a week if that was possible. Yeah.
I think the senior center would be, right?
Yeah. Actually, we have people who walk in the door just to use the bathroom, so.
We weren't going to bring it up, though.
It wasn't you, Luke. But we, but we do, so it wouldn't be a problem. I know our driver for our lunch program uses our bathroom a lot, so.
And then it also says here, the host organization is responsible for permits, insurance and permissions. What type of insurance are they looking at there?
Sure, so we provided our certificate of insurance. So we are covered for anything, you know, that would happen as well. But for any permits, that is typical for any public land that we would park on. So since we are here and we are hosted by the senior center, we wouldn't need those permits unless that was, you know, decided by the board that you would. But if it was, for example, we wanted to go onto, you know, a street and just park or something like that, we would need that peddler's permit. But that's not something that we would need for a host site.
Yeah, that's the insurance part that I was referring to. What insurance is expected from the host organization?
Sure, I'll have to go back to our legal team and talk to them about that. And I'd be happy to get any of those answers. I'm sorry, I'm not quite familiar.
Because I don't think we have, we're not expecting to provide any insurance for that.
They would supply a certificate of insurance.
Yeah, we just, in the MOU, it says that we have to provide insurance, so.
I think that that might be specifically for that public land. But again, I'll, I can, you know, email Donna and make sure that I have that clear.
Any other questions?
But other than that, yeah, very good. Obviously, it's a, it sounds like a great program. Hopefully, it can benefit people in the community. And then the only thing I would say is we probably have to rock people here tonight. And I think if you would have let them know, it would increase the participation.
Yeah, that would be a great partnership.
Yeah, we could, we certainly do that. You know, once we decide on a date and a time and all that, we could certainly let them know.
Who else? Hey, well, it's on the agenda for our meeting. You don't need to be here.
Okay.
If you want to be, Ken.
All right, I am going to go. Okay.
Maybe, maybe you want to stay. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have the part-time assistant code officer. And we have found a part-time person to take that position. And Paul Keelick, who has been a employee of the town. And we just wanted to let you know that we would like to hire him and that his rate of pay would be $20.06 an hour. And we definitely, he'll only be part-time. So I guess we're still looking for another part-timer, correct?
That is correct.
You guys all know Paul, you're a nice guy. Go with it. Okay, next.
Are we, we're just, are we creating two positions today or just the one?
Just one.
Do we want to create two or do we have to work a company? Because we're hiring one, but we need to be two.
It's the same title, I don't think we have to go back again.
We're creating a position that you can have as many. Okay, next is a full-time court clerk. Been a kind of funny year with COVID and everything. And Maggie retired almost a year ago, I think. And we never replaced her. The courts are starting to get a little busier. There's a lot more paperwork now involved than ever. And the judges asked if they could get a full-time clerk. And we did hire a part-time. She ended up leaving us. So we have Alexander Abiza. And she's agreed to take the position if we hire her at $17 an hour. And her resume. Yeah, it was recommended by both judges. So does anybody know her or you have any questions? Okay. On the agenda then. Next, we have the library LED light project. Chuck, did you want to talk to anything?
Sure, sure. This is a project for the Main Street Library where the Erie County Library System has, has found a grant or maybe they are doing the grant where they supply all of the material, all of the light bulbs, I should say, to change out every light bulb in the entire library to LED. And they, they are paying for 75% of the labor to do that. So we put it out to bid. We sent it to five contractors. Sent it to Morning Electric, Dugas Electric, Dix Electric and Hamburg, IPL and Simmons-Selly Electric. And we got two responses from Morning Electric and IPL, who by the way, did our town hall. In the results of that bid, our industrial IPL came in at $14,900 and Morning Electric came in at $10,500. We had a walkthrough of the job, so they all understood it completely and thoroughly. Each of them said it would take five working days to get it complete because we are going to shut the library down.
So it's to replace the fixtures too, right? Not just the bulbs?
No, just the bulbs.
Just the bulbs?
Yes.
Isn't the, is it the actual, what do you call it, capacitor?
The ballast, it's a bypass ballast system where you no longer have the ballast. It's just the power goes directly to the LED bulbs. So we will have.
So right now, they're fluorescent.
Right now.
So it's like, okay.
Yes.
It's a conversion.
Okay. All right, I'm just, you know, changing the bulbs.
No, no.
I can do it for $75.
So any questions on, it looks like Morning was so, so. None? Okay. We proposed local law for the BNI zoning moratorium extension. And this would be to set a public hearing to extend that moratorium for three months as we're continuing to work through it. Chuck and Luke have put a lot of time in it. And the board has had a meeting with the whole board and we still need some time to, to finish it up. Does everyone understand it and okay with it?
I'm, I'm good with it. There is a little typo in the notice for public hearing on the back page. We're going to extend the moratorium for three months, but on the back page, that's from the first moratorium we put on, it says for a period of six months, following date of adoption in each one of those first three paragraphs.
I don't have a back.
That's not even supposed to be on there. That's not even supposed to be on there. This is a little off here.
It's not even supposed to be on there. Okay. That page is not supposed to be on there.
You guys okay with that? Does anybody have anything else for the work session?
I guess, just getting back to that, do we know if there had been any, you know, has anyone approached the building department with proposals or? I'm just curious.
People have called asking questions about future development, but it's all, it's all been conceptual so far. No one has come to us and said, we have a plan that we want to submit. And, and people are, have been fairly understanding about the moratorium itself.
Okay.
Anything else in the work session or?
Yes, I'd like to just mention about the, the ODA moratorium. Just, just so everybody's clear, we are planning on setting a public hearing on September 27th. And the day after that is when we're having a public meeting with the planning board on the 28th. So if anybody can make it or anyone in the audience would like to make it, that's, that's, that night. And then because that moratorium runs out on the October 13th, October 13th. So if the first meeting in October, we'll have to either approve it or extend the moratorium.
Are we allowed in the open meeting room to do that? Three of us in the meeting like that? We are.
Yeah, it's a public.
Public meeting.
Is that okay, Ron?
It's a public meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
It will be posted in the advertiser. And we're going to ask them to run, ask if they could please run an additional blurb somewhere else outside of the classified section to invite the public to come as well. But it does mention that the planning board members, in addition to town board members, will be there to discuss the ODA changes.
Can you also, Rob, put it on the website?
Absolutely.
Facebook. Anything else for the work session?
If this is over, if I guys thought, it's all taken.
Yes. Yeah, we, we added it, it's going to be added now. So what we'll do is we won't do the public, we're not going to do the public hearing until seven, but we can probably go into new business. And at seven o'clock, then we can go back to the public hearing. So and under new business, we need to add two items. You would be the bid results from the highway department for surplus. And then V would be surpressing electronic equipment. I have a motion to add those items.
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Like my Chuck, any discussion? All in favor? And there's Carrie. Before I go on, Councilwoman Freeze is not here tonight because she just became a grandma this morning. So she's excused. Forgot to say that. Okay, so we'll go right back to Feedmore. And we just heard.
We need to do the audience and the minutes first, right?
Yeah, I can go back to that. I apologize on that. I was skipping right down as I saw the. Yep, yep. All right, I need a motion to approve the August 23rd, 2021 work session and meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, do I have a second? Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, and then is Carrie. And we have audience, which is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the board and any items that are on the agenda tonight. If you do wish to do so, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Just if anybody is online to.
Anything that's on the agenda tonight, if it's ODA, it's not on the agenda.
Robert Aronica, 1848 Boys Road, East Aurora. I just wanted, as an update, I addressed the town board about a month or two ago regarding the flag lots. I know you're considering that. And since then, on the flag lot, I was recommended to stake our property because the other, the owner of the flag lot, he zoned, but he didn't like the way it looked and he pulled the stakes. And I was concerned about invading our property line or the adjacent property, this list property. And low and behold, they came through. They didn't hit me, but they hit the other side and they were about six to seven feet over from their 20-foot line. And there's no way. And then when we observed, we also observed our property line. As I told Mr. Bach here, last week, they pulled a stake and he instructed that it was illegal. Duh, I do know that. My problem is, and I think that I'm just trying to reiterate it, the concerns of the water. We found out that we had water drainage on Boys and on Chopper with the aquifers, I guess, coming up and everything else. God knows what's going on. And also septic's going downhill. I think this just goes to show you that some of the concerns of the flag lots are pretty dire and that we have to really take a good handle on it, especially for terrain that is downhill, et cetera. Because I don't want to be down Pooper Creek, coming down from the top of my property going down, water going down. And I just think that we need to advise neighborhoods of when people are doing excavation on these flag lots, et cetera, and staking them out, making it mandatory that people that are doing anything on these property lines, they need to have survey stakes in marked appropriately so that we don't have mishaps. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on any of the items that are on the agenda?
Anybody online to use the raise your hand function or type in the chat?
Okay. Okay, so we've added the items to the new business and we'll go back to Feedmore. I thought I'd come back to that. Well, we got the public hearing. Did we do that first? All right, we can do V of unfinished business, that's not part of our. And that's setting the. That's setting the extension for the BNI zoning extension for three months. And we just discussed that. So do I have a motion to set the public, do we know the date on that? Okay, do I have a motion to set the public hearing for the BNI zoning moratorium for September 27th at 7:00 PM? Motion by Luke, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that's Carrie. Now, I'm going to go to Feedmore. So anxious to get this produce truck in. Do you have a start date at all or is that anything that we should? Okay. Okay. Well, I would, I would make a motion that we go ahead and authorize the supervisor to sign the agreement with Feedmore contingent upon the proper insurance information and the agreement and the certificate of insurance for the town of Aurora.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Chuck, any discussion?
I just hope it doesn't get too crowded over there, that's my only concern. You know, if you have 40 people over there, is that 40 cars? I don't know.
My thought is that it'll be the people who are already there. You know, if they're there for lunch or programs or the power's going over there. And I can't see it becoming that busy now once.
If it does, yeah. If it does, we'll just have to work something out.
But I don't, I don't see that.
We hope, but we don't hope.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping it's really successful. It sounds like a really nice program.
Jim, just so you got what she had also suggested that. Dual right determining.
Right.
So contingent of that as well.
Right. Get that in the minutes, Martha. Okay. Any other discussion?
I was just getting to the, the traffic. I don't think it will be that significant. It either is pretty narrow, the, you know, it's not like it's a farmer's market. It's 10 to 15 items, you know, that are in season or whatever.
You know, that are in season or whatever. I think it'll be okay.
I mean, you could certainly get them a number, you know, if they're in, if the dining room, if we have, if we had 40 people, well, so we give them numbers and five people a lot of the time.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed and then is Carrie. Now this is. B is create the part-time assistant code enforcement officer position. And it should be noted that there are some limits, the. Maximum 19 hours per week for this position. I don't believe you have to take a test. So do we, can we have a motion to authorize the creation of this? New assistant code enforcement officer PT position?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jolene, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, that's Carrie. And C is request to hire Paul Keely, Labor RPT to the Assistant Code Enforcement Office. Effective 9/14/2021 and his rate of pay would be $20.60 an hour. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Motion by Jolene, do I have a second? Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed and that is Carrie. D requests to hire the full-time court clerk and this is for. The court. Recommended by both judges, the higher Alexandria Garbizo of 352 Prospect, Nistura is a full-time clerk. And that would be effective 9/14/2021 at a rate of pay of $17 per hour. Questions on that? Now I need a motion. Motion by Luke, do I have a second?
Second.
By Jolene, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed and that is Carrie. Next we have the library LED light project. Explained earlier that, that we place in all the converting all the lights LED and the low cost was. Warning electric at 10,500 in which the town is only responsible for 25%. Do I have a motion to award warning electric with a job for $10,500 and which the town is only 25%? You have 25% responsible for, sorry.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Chuck, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jolene, any discussion?
The, our portion of the building are now. I'm assuming we have enough.
I think that's what we discussed. That's been a while since we, yeah. And then the county is paying the rest. That's right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed and that's Carrie.
Give 40,000.
Okay. Okay. F. This is a. Open space committee appointment and this is by Philip Payne. I think Luke, you. Recommended.
Yep.
Is that position Nancy Smith's position, maybe?
She stepped down from the committee.
Right.
So. It's not, it's not officially a committee in the. Space where we are not official for our appointment.
She still have to sign up like her?
Yes. Yeah, the town set it up as committee. It's not in the code. We normally don't put our committees in the code. That was plenty more things that are required by town law. Um, so I'm assuming he's going to be filling the unexpired term of Nancy Smith. She, she did resign.
Yeah.
Oh, that's she fired her, okay, yeah.
Okay.
We had spoke about that before and we said something about that. There was the questions around, you and I spoke about it. There was questions. There wasn't what the committee was and decided that appointment wasn't the way to go. So. That's, is there something else we need to do and make it a committee or?
No, not now.
Martha, what, what is the expired term, you know? So the motion would be just to. Any other? Question. I have a motion. Your motion to. Point Philip Payne to the open space committee expired term of Nancy Smith. And motion by Luke, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jolene, any discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Opposed and that is Carrie. And the next. Next bunch of. Things that we have here are kind of complicated, but we've got some moving around of people at a point on boards. And I'll just try to go through it for you just best we can. 6G is accepting the resignation of Jerry Thompson, senior. From the planning board effective August 13th, 2021. Can I do this in all one motion? Do we have to do them separate? Motion. Maybe one more?
One motion.
A motion? Okay. So then 6H would be appoint Jerry Thompson, senior to fill the alternate member vacancy on the planning board term. 9/13/2021 to 12/31/2021. And then six, I would accept resignation of Tim Stroth from the zoning board of appeals. 6J would be to appoint Tim Stroth as a planning board member to fill the unexpired term of jury Thompson. So Tim is just moving from one board to another. 6K appoint zoning board alternate member, Mandy Carroll, two is a zoning board member to fill the unexpired. Expired term of Tim Stroth, term ending 12/31/2024. And 6O is appoint Thomas Welch is a ZBA alternate member, term ending 12/31/2021. Everyone understand? Okay. I need a what? I don't know. I need a motion to approve those appointments.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jolene, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed and that is Carrie. You'll be able to speak again, just a little bit down on the agenda, okay? 6M. Is request to hire a part-time lifeguard and a part-time rec attendant. And this is for $12.70 an hour. Fiona Biggs. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that one.
Motion by Jolene, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Chuck, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed and that is Carrie. I'm sure that's the part, the part-time lifeguards, Sidney Borges and Timothy Lambert. Both at the rate of pay of $14.20 an hour, noting that Tim is a non-residence. Do I have a motion to hire as listed? Motion by Luke. I have a second?
I'll second.
By Chuck, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed and it's carried. 6N, for those of you who have come in later, we're doing a public hearing at seven o'clock for rack. If that's what you're here for, just so you know, we went on to other business first. All right, next we have N and this is from Martha, Colin Clark. She wants to declare the following as surplus inventory to be recycled and see, okay, I printer. In IBM Wheel Rider. A motion to declare the final items as surplus.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jolene, do I have a second? Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed and that is Carrie. Next is our CDBG grant. Application and every year we have to set a public hearing. So that we can have public input and how those funds should be distributed. In the public hearing will be on Tuesday, October 12th at 2000, 2021 at 7:00 PM. At the Aurora Municipal Center, 575 Oakwood, East Aurora. And this is all regarding the funds that are available to the town of Aurora. We have a motion to set the public hearing for our CDBG grants.
So moved.
Motion by Chuck, do I have a second? Second by Luke, any discussion? All favor?
Actually, Martha, just so we don't, the, the date at the bottom of it just needs to be 21. Yeah, probably it's last year's. Thank you for putting the paper.
Good catch. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed and that is carried. Next we have P and this is a request to do a TE9 speed study on Mill Road coming out of the village, going into the town. It is. Goes from 30 to 45 and there are some residents that are concerned. About the 45 mile an hour starting too soon. Do I have any questions on it before you go on? Okay. Do I have a motion to go ahead and authorize a TE9? Speed study for Mill Road. Motion by Luke, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Opposed and it's carried. She was a budget amendment. Kathleen Moffett, this is for East Row Baseball and Softball Donation. She asked that we approve the amended budget to record it 2,500 donation from the store or baseball and softball. Approved at our last meeting, amendment would be as follow and follows increased revenue line 2705. That two donations, East Row Baseball Supplies by 2,500. And increase, increase the appropriation line, A7110.444 Parks and Supplies by 2,500. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Motion by Jolene, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Opposed and that is carried. Next is a request to attend the seminar. This is from Roger Pigeon, our assessor. He's asking to attend the New York State Conference on October 3rd through the 6th, 2021. The seminar or assessment administration tenants, if these seminars satisfy his continuing education. I believe there's a stain overnight. So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
By Jolene, do I have a second? Second by Luke, any discussion?
Is, is Roger staying overnight? This is America Falls. I didn't see him. I see no calls.
Usually there would be, he's staying overnight to be a request for that.
So he's coming home.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Opposed and that is Carrie. Next we have. You with delinquent out of district water customers for district 15. And please have the following delinquent water customers added to the Erie County tax rolls for 2022. As 1319 to Homewood. $98.26, 47, 27 Transit Road for $164.09. And 4483 Transit Road for $210.69. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Luke, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Opposed and that is Carrie. These are a couple more budget amendments from Kathleen Moffett. And she asked that we. Amend the budget to order, in order to record expenditures related to park improvements. The source of the funding is fund balance and the amendments are as follows, at expenditure line, A7110. That 454 Park Improvements, increase A7110.454 by $5,000. And decrease A599 appropriate fund balance by $5,000. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, do I have a second? Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed and that is Carrie. And one of the items that we added to the agenda were the bid results from the auction. Unlimited that Dave. All this mostly highway equipment and.
The, it was all highway equipment, some trailers and miscellaneous items.
And well, the total was $8,552.
Yeah, I think we did really well.
I have a motion to accept those bids.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jolene, do I have a second? Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed and that is Carrie. And our last thing is V and this is from Kathleen Moffett to surplus. Some electronic equipment. And she has the models, hard drives have been removed and destroyed later, destroyed later. And you'll be recycled this week through the highway departments recycle. So do I have a motion to surplus those electronic equipment? It was listed.
I'll make that motion.
By Chuck. There's second.
Second.
Second by Jolene, any discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Opposed and that is Carrie. Move on to communications and reports. We have the August 2021 town clerk. Tax town clerk, building department, water clerk and supervisor. Probably want to. Take, do you want to take a few minutes before the public hearing? Do you want to go right through everything and then go to the public?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
From West Wells.
Oh. Well, we could do, we do, we could do audience right now. Why don't we do that? And this, first of all, this other gentleman was first right here. That's right. Grab the mic though.
Not understanding the protocol, I apologize sincerely for interrupting, but I noticed that when you were doing, in the interest of time, signing off a member. But I noticed that when you were doing, in the interest of time, signing off of members, especially for the planning board. You included Jerry Thompson, who's a very fine gentleman by any stretch of the imagination. But I think that Mr. Thompson and his family, because of century twenty-one in real estate. I think he should reclusive because of a conflict of interest and that's all I'm raising is. Somebody that is purporting to be in the interest of the town, in the best interest of the zoning, et cetera. To be involved in a retail setting and he also had an article in the paper just this past week promoting this saying. You know, I'm not going to go through it, but I think that the family, I don't know if it was senior or whatever. But either one, real estate and they should reclusive themselves from appointment and that's all I raised the question about. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Just if you just state your name and address first.
My name is Tom Kin.
You gotta, you gotta talk into the mic. Oh, all right.
Oh, is it on? My name is Tom Kin from one eighty Old Glenwood Road, West Falls, New York. And I just have some concerns about the bike path going through back of my property. So I just got a few things I want to list just to get it on record because I don't know what else to do. It's been twenty, twenty-five years that I'd been battling with the railroad when they had railroad going through there. And now it's owned by the bike path people, which is just a lease. The railroads tell me that they can't, that they're not going to do anything anymore, that it's up to the bike path people because they have the rights. And when I talk to the bike path people, they tell me they only have surface rights. The culverts about twenty-five, thirty feet down and it's caving in. It's shaped like a triangle right now and it's not doing what it's supposed to. So I talked to some people and they said I could probably start a lawsuit. But I didn't, you know, I don't know, I don't know what to do no more. It's like I've reached a point, it's been twenty-five years of negotiating. They used to have a guy, Jason Penfold, that would come and bulldoze it out, make it look real pretty. But it never really did the job. Every spring when the, when the snow thaws, there's a thirty-six inch culvert on the road or maybe more, it's pretty big. And then there's a twenty-four inch culvert under railroad tracks, that's caving in, it's shaped like a triangle right now. And it's hump, Rick can confirm all this afterwards. We looked through it the other day and you could see humps where it's caved in. And that's the reason they put the other one on top of the ceramic one. They put a pipe on top of it and that caved in. So now it's just not, it can't handle the water, it's blowing out the other end. I mean, it's, it's shooting out from me to you. But yet I still have a lake in my backyard and I'm talking a lake, it's not just a little pond of water. It's my whole property, probably. Fifty feet by a hundred feet is flooded, ten feet deep, you know, and I, we talked, Rick came to my house today. So we did come up with kind of a. Solution, we'll see, we're going to work on it. But I just wanted to go over some of the things that I, my concerns.
Couple of minutes?
Yes. I've been dealing with the bike path people for, since inception. One way or another. My, my latest, my latest thing that I wanted to do was I talked to somebody from the town. Is to get a, you know, a hole of the code enforcement department and see what I can do with them from East Row. And then I was looking for a letter from the town attorney to write them a letter, your ECRT, just to let them know that somebody's keeping an eye on this, you know, it's a. Because when I called the town, they said they don't have the rights because it's railroad property. When I called the railroad, they said they don't own anymore, the bike path people have surface rights, surface rights, you can't dig. So I'm looking to get somebody to commit to digging that culvert, which I might have, but we'll, we'll find out. Right now it's, it's, it's supposed to be round, it's a twenty-four inch round culvert. And the last time Jason Penfold came over, he dug it all out and smoothed it all out and he piled up some railroads ties on top of it. And it became a triangle. It was up like this when he did that and then he pushed it down. So now there's water flow problems going through it because it's not, it's not a hole anymore, it's a triangle with a hump and two other humps in the middle. So the original installation was a twenty-four inch pipe, which is like I said, I think the one on the road is thirty-six. And uh, my, our biggest concern, me and my wife, we go on vacation every February. For like six weeks, we're gone and that's like prime time for flooding. So we never know what's going on at our house, you know, so this year we went in May just for that reason. But you know, it's, it's not prime time in Florida in May, it's kind of hot, you know? So we want to go in February, but we gotta worry about that. And then uh, our, my wife's main concern is we have twelve grandkids. And that bike path will be probably from me to you away from our property. And I got passed going through there, you know, they go in there with the lawnmowers and ride around in four-wheelers and they have fun. Now we're going to have bike path people over there, so my wife's really concerned about that. And then lack of privacy, you know, we, we're always in the backyard, we have fire, bonfires all the time and there's. There's like all kinds of strangers going to be going through there if they go through there. And there's no way of protecting our property if we're not there or our kids decide to go on that, on that bike path. You know, when, when they're not supposed to, they're three years old to seventeen years old, they're going to do whatever they want, whenever they're, if we're sitting on a deck and they're out in the woods, you know? And then uh, the, the thing that I talked about today, about me and Rick, what we decided to maybe do. Because I can't get a commitment from anybody, nobody will commit, the railroad won't, the bike path won't, town can't. So what we agree, me and him agreed on today is that I would, I would accept commitment if he purchased those culverts. Four of them, maybe five, because it could be a hundred feet across. And put them in my property and I have the room for it, put it there, this way I know that I'm, they're committed to fix my problem. And we both agreed on it, but he's got to, he's got to run through the board and go through all that. So that's where I'm at, I just wanted to get it on record because it's been so long, I don't know what to do anymore, you know, it's like I call people and just get ignored.
I, I just have a question, so you're from the, you're from Rails Trails?
Yes, he's on a board.
Yeah, so. If they put the drainage in, you're okay with the Rails Trails, is that, is that mitigating?
No, I'm not saying that, I just want that, I just want that fixed.
Okay.
We'll discuss that later.
All right, I was just trying to get, if you were making some kind of a deal.
No, 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 I'm not making no deals, my wife will never go to that.
Is that a spot, excuse me, is that a spot that the trail is, is, there's a lot of washouts and cave, you know, sunken areas?
I guess on one side of the trail, right, it's like thirty feet down, maybe?
On the one side. We went out, I always take my people with me and then what we do is analyze what we see. And then go back and review what we've got. And so we did that, I think a week ago, this past Wednesday. I brought my people and when I say that is that I built the Rails Trails, Pat McGee Trail. From Salamanca to Cataragus in two thousand and ran that for twenty years, we just sold that to Allegheny State Park, in fact. And so I have the experience, nobody else on the board has that experience. But when we went out and we looked at what we had on Tom's side, Tom has a legitimate problem. And, and he has a legitimate request to get it fixed, it hasn't been fixed in thirty years. This is one of the problems that when a railroad pulls out, doesn't do anything, the watershed goes to hell, quite frankly. And that's why our group is trying to do is do the Rails the Trails, it puts your watershed back into its proper path. What we have here is on the two forty side, there looks like there's at least a six to eight foot drop, maybe more. From the, the culvert straight down. And then that goes out under two forty, which they have a five foot by five foot culvert on that side. And as Tom said, on his side above him, they have a thirty inch. In between is a twenty-four inch. What they've done, the railroad has done over the years is that when the cast iron one collapsed, which Tom thinks that was what, twenty-five years ago? Or more, what they did was they cut down through to the culvert, put a plastic one on top of the cast iron. What that did was raise the water level two feet before it starts to flow again, which then backs up and pools on his property. So he has a legitimate complaint. I told, when I came on the board, I said, I'll give you advice, I'll tell you how to do stuff, but I've built a trail, I now want to be involved. But this has lingered so long, I jumped in on it, plus the people that were working with them, they had some medical issues. And so I said, okay, I'll do this and I'll go out. So I said to Tom, after my people looked at it. We, we figured out what it was going to cost and it wasn't going to be two culverts. Or two sections wide, we think it's going to be four to five all the way across, that drove up the price and such. So we got a price, what we figure it is, one of our board members stepped forward and said, I'll put up twenty-five percent of that, okay? Today, Tom says, well, I've listened to so many people from so many sides, who do I trust? Okay, my, my role here is to be his advocate for our organization, okay? So today, and Tom had a good idea, he said, you know, I know you want to come back and clean this up and then address it next year. Okay, but if you come in and clean it up this year, how do I know you're not going to go through the same thing again? So what he said was, why don't you buy the four culverts and put it on my property? And I said, you know, that's a great idea. And this is why if you do it face to face, in person, sometimes you can come up with a good common sense answer. The answer is, and I like to move fast, is that I've been in contact with that person that said that they would. Advance that money because we figure it's going to be like twenty thousand, but to buy the four culverts for them. So I can say today to you, since we talked this afternoon, we're committed and we will buy those. Only problem is, is right now, as everybody knows, some things are short supply. And when I say that, I'm still doing projects down in my area in Cataragus. And I have a nature, seven hundred and fifty acre nature sanctuary and we're having hard times getting culvert, but we're committed to do that.
Okay, but my original question was, where is, where are those culverts cross, is that where? Does the trail run along that and is that impacting, so it is, so it's, there's a drop, there's a problem with, okay, again, that's what I wanted to.
Could we have your name, sir, please? Pardon, can we have your name? My name is Rick LaFieber. I'm a board member, but I'm also the executive director of the Cataragus Local Development Corporation. And my organization's been around for twenty-six years. And what we are is for the Cataragus area for community and economic development. We've done a variety of projects down there. At one point we own thirteen hundred acres in Cataragus County for open to the.
This will be a separate conversation, but I'd like to talk to you about how that Rails to Trails project ends up being sold by someone. But that's a conversation for another day because that, when, when we, when we were at the meeting before, and I, I don't want you to come on it now, just, I, I'm going to.
We're, we're a local development corporation and we're the same as any corporation, even though we're a not-for-profit and we can buy and sell real estate.
Okay, yeah, I just want to talk a little bit more.
Okay. Do you want my card to call?
Yeah, that'd be great, because I, I think I have it.
We have a public hearing that we have to start shortly. But what I'll just summarize what, where the town is. Where we always have been is if the Rails the Trails. Would mitigate any issues and make the, the impacted people right, such as the gun. Conservation Club and the residents that are, are having trouble with this, that they think it's going through their backyard. If they can sort of mitigate this and make them happy, the town would go on record. Yeah, right now it's hard to support someone, there's other people being affected by it.
I went out, I went to the West Valley, or the West Falls Conservation Club meeting last month.
So that's what has to be.
I handed out a bunch of celeries if you want. And what's all the topics for you?
We have to, we have a public hearing scheduled. Thank you very much, thank you very much for coming tonight. All right. Tonight we have public hearing and the Rural Outreach Center developmental plan. And.
Excuse me, Jim, should we just, I probably have, I think everybody out there is hanging.
Oh.
Out there, rather than have to start over.
Yeah. I didn't realize there were that many out there.
Yeah.
We'll let you get all situated before we start. Okay, where they're sit. So this is a public hearing for the Rural Outreach Centers. Developmental Plan and Special Use Permit. And just so I can. Address everyone now, this is for the developmental plan of the project and the special use permit. We are aware of all the great things that RAC does. And we, we want to, we're working with them very closely and we want to get this project going just as, as much as you guys do, we have to do it in, you know, the proper manner. But just so you know, we, we know. How great you are, Frank, what you do and all your staff. But this is really related to the building part of it and the special use permit. Does anybody want to add anything to that? Okay, so I will start this public hearing at. Seven oh six, seven oh six. And just to start, I'm going to ask Councilman Snyder to go over just a couple of the added changes that were, were done recently.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Bach. Over the past several months, the board has met with representatives of the RAC and the neighbors and, and you know. The RAC has furnished a plan that we revised and it backed to the RAC, we found some, you know, some common ground and agreed on some things. The latest plan that we got, which was dated eight twelve twenty-one. Even though we didn't get it for some time after that, but we have agreed with that plan. With the following modifications and revisions. On the north line, where it comes from Olean Road to the very first intersection. There was eleven conifer trees that were planted in that corner there. With the latest revision of the plan, those trees got removed and got moved up a little closer to the corner of the building. And also that section of fence was partially eliminated due to a, due to the zoning code. But we are requesting that those eleven conifer trees get planted back in that corner. As they were drawn on that. First plan. There's that revision and also on the south line, the board fence starts at the front, more or less, at the front building line on the property. And goes to the west and ends at the back. Of the pavement. We are requesting that that board fence continue all the way to the rear lot line, which is about another two hundred and eighty feet. That's six foot high board fence. And then lastly, we are asking the RAC to set aside forty conifer trees to be placed. Location to be placed after we're done with the grading and lands in. Let's just say after, after we're done with the grading to see where any bare spots might be and where they can be placed. On either side of the fence to help to, to, you know, assist with any, any bare spots that might come about because. On the south line. After the pavement ends there, you know, yes, they're, they're mature hardwood trees, the leaves are going to fall. Yes, we will have the fence, but we may want to put some, some pine trees in there to make it look a little bit nicer. So that the neighbors don't always have to look at that, like the fence on that side or other places. Again, those locations to be determined. But we have approved the plan with those revisions. Those revisions are depicted on these two plans here and also the one out in the hall. And that's it.
If someone spoke with Mike.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, anyone that wants to come? Yes, anyone that wants to come, uh, comment on the developmental plan? Um, just come up and please use the mic and state your name and address.
Um, good evening, everyone, Michael Sawicki. I'm a board member of Rock and I, Mr. Snyder, I've got just a little bit of a, I need some clarification about the last revision you talked about.
With the forty trees?
Yeah. Who, first of all, you know, we're, we don't want to be in a position where we have to put in fifteen foot trees with a two inch ball of roots on.
I know.
Yeah, so.
Same trees as you're putting in in the rest of it, six foot high.
Okay, who is going to make a determination and how are we going to do it?
The town board will decide.
This board here?
Yes, well.
Yeah, okay, all right, so that will be like a separate proceeding or something, is that what we're doing? I'm not.
It can be informal.
No, it doesn't have to be formal, when, when, when the, when the grading and, and you know, when you get into the landscaping, we'll see the bear spots by then, because you'll have to, you know, you'll have those swales in at the driveway, and the swales in on the, on the north property line, and we'll be able to see where the bear spots are.
And then the other thing you said was, these trees will be there so that the neighbors don't have to look at the fence, which sounds to me like they're going to be on the wrong side of the fence from our property.
Well, we wouldn't like to limit ourselves to either side of the fence. You know, to one side only, we would, we would like to have the option to, to put it, maybe if the neighbors want it on that side of the property.
Well, you understand, then, we're putting trees on neighbors' properties, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Well, we, we, of course, have been all over this, and we appreciate members of the board, and we really appreciate the time Mr. Snyder and Ms. Freeze took to go over this, uh, all with us and negotiated, and I think we had a good process. And frankly, we don't have any more to say about it, so we're just here and we're ready to answer questions, respond to any other comments we might get. Okay?
Thanks, Mike. Would anyone else like to speak? This public hearing? Right, you have to come up to use the mic.
One second, could you, could you start over again, please, because we can't.
I said I'm here tonight to support the.
You have to state your name.
Oh, of course, my first name is Madonna, my last name is Priory. I'm here to support in any way possible the Rural Outreach Center. I have um, personal experience with this group at this time. Um, I will make my remarks very brief. I had never heard of this organization about a year ago.
Comments for the developmental plan?
I'm sorry?
Do these have any relation to the building?
Yes.
Okay. If, if it's the building, part of the building or the special use permit, that's what we're, we're discussing.
I have experience with other buildings, not, this is the first one in East Aurora, however, so I just wanted to say that South townspeople, rural suburban ex-urban people have had difficulties this past year, just like anyone else in our country with COVID, et cetera. I myself want to state that I've had wonderful um, help from this organization. And as you can see, I came in here tonight with a walker. The few times that I've had a need to go into that building, it's been very difficult because it's not accessible to those people with disabilities. So I came here tonight just to say very, very hopefully effectively, that we need to do whatever we can to help everyone who needs help to be able to get it in the least restrictive environment. So I support anything that the Rock is doing now to continue to help those who have had difficulties this past year or the year before. And as we look ahead, it's a very strong feeling that I have that we should always be making buildings accessible to all. I, having lived almost my entire life in the city of Buffalo, I spent seventeen years on the Mayor's Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities. I've sat on five different hospital boards dealing with needs of patients who might need some extra help. So even though it might seem that what I'm talking about is ancillary to what you're doing tonight, I, I ask you to keep in mind that buildings like this are important, but the work that goes on in these buildings is more so, and every single attempt should be made to make this building accessible to all. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for running the microphone, Joe. Anybody else like to speak? The public hearing? Please come up to the mic and give us your name and address. Give it to about three minutes, please.
Hello, I'm Crystal Dedrick, I am the South Side neighbor, good to see you guys again. Um, my request is, I know we've already been over how wonderful the Rock is, the great work that they're doing. I'm still a neighbor, um, I do have an interest, there has been some trespassing on my property, understood, I don't know who it was, but there's PVC pipes and trash back by the creek, that is the primary reason why I am requesting a fence. Clearly, there's some unsupervised folks back there. Very clearly, they're walking from the ROC property onto mine, not the end of the world, but if the, the number of people who will be serviced there increases, that therefore it increases my risk of liability. I am a property owner, I would like my children to be safe and secluded in my backyard and not be subjected to any of the business that happens over there, right? Two separate properties, I shouldn't have to deal with any of that. And uh, and beyond that, I mean, my, in I personally would request a fence around the entire perimeter. That's in my best interest, understood that there's objection to that possibly? I tried to speak to Frank about it a couple of times, not really sure what happened or where we landed there. Um, but I did speak with Chuck and Sue, and we went over the, the site plan, so thank you guys for that. Um, beyond that, I, I mean, the special use, it all seems um, relatively reasonable, the fifty people limit, and then permits beyond that, as I understood it, does that all seem right? So I don't have anything in addition to a fence around the perimeter is my request.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Who else wants to speak? Once, twice, okay? And we will close this public hearing at seven nineteen, seven nineteen. Into discussion, the board. Any comments from the board?
No, not on what was, not on what was mentioned, um. I guess the, the plan would be, though, that those would need to be formally revised with those.
I'm, I'm sure. Do that.
Sure, absolutely.
So we are voting on this today or wait for the plans?
I have no problem voting on it.
Contingent upon revised plans that.
Yep.
Meet. Meet your, yeah, requirements.
Sure.
Well, if we do that, we'll go to unfinished business. And the first part of it would be the SEAKER, the short environmental assessment form. I have to read these, so bear with me. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? The answer is no. Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or the intensity use of the land? And it has a moderate to large impact may occur, and that is a yes. And I will, uh, I will go further on that one through, we read these uh, off. Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics, characteristics that caused the establishment of critical environmental area? No. Number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And if fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? The answer is no. Number seven, will the proposed action impact existing A public, private water supplies or B public, private waste water treatment utilities? Answer is no. Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? The answer is no. Number nine, will the proposed action result in the adverse change of natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna? Answer is no. Number ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, drainage problems? No. And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources of human health? And that answer is no. Getting back um, the question number two, a moderate to large impact may occur and a change in the use of intensity of use of land with the proposed project. The project is a larger scale than what currently exists. A mostly undeveloped land is being developed with two buildings in a parking lot. The project went through a thorough site design process to mitigate any adverse impacts. The architectural style of the proposed building is aesthetically pleasing. Buffering will be added in the form of trees fencing and other vegetation, stormwater control features will be implemented. So the resolution declaring the lead agency in adopting negative declaration. And I'll just read the now therefore, be it resolved that the town board, the town of Aurora declares itself lead agency with regard to SEAKER for this action and further resolved that after considering the action proposed hereon, reviewed the criteria contained in section six one seven dot one one of the rules and regulations of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, determined that the action is unlisted, is an unlisted action, and further resolved that the town board of the town of Aurora reviewed part two of the short environmental assessment form and noted in part three of the short environmental assessment form that steps will be taken to mitigate any moderate to large impacts. They may result in a change in the use of intensity of the use of the land. And further resolved, the proposed unlisted action will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment. And therefore, an environmental impact statement need not be prepared for further, for future. Resolved that negative declaration is issued with regard to the site plan and special use permit for the Rural Outreach Center. Seven thirty Olean Road in East Aurora. Martha, do we have to vote and just adapt it? And this, adapting the secret, so is that a vote? So I need a motion um, adopting the resolution for a negative declaration for the Rural Outreach Center at seven thirty Olean Road.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Jolene, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And is carried? And now we have the site plan resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to chapter ninety-five site plan review, section ninety-five dash two C, the Aurora Town Board hereby approves the site plan submitted it for seven thirty Olean Road for the Rural Outreach Center. To construct two buildings, a parking lot and required drainage with the following conditions. Number one, the temporary trailer currently being used by Rock will be removed from the property within thirty days of the certificate of accuracy. Either temporary or permanent being issued for the first building constructed on the property. With two or six foot high wood fence, board on board fence will be installed along the south, north and northwest lot lines as indicated on the approvals, approved site plan. A, the board on board fence along the south lot line shall begin at the front line of the principal building and extend towards the east to the rear property line of seven thirty Olean Road. And B, all fences shall be a minimum of one foot from the property lines. Number three, pine trees will be planted in accordance with the approved site plan. Number four, up to forty additional pine trees we um, plant or be asked for for planting in areas along the south and or north lot lines and determined by the town board after, to be determined by the town board after the excavation and grading are completed. Number five, silt fence, silt sock, hay bales shall be used during the construct, construction to control storm runoff. Number six, a temporary construction fence shall be erected and maintained along the north and south property lines during construction. Number seven, outdoor construction activity, activities shall be limited, eight hours between seven AM and five PM Monday through Saturday. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution for approving the site plan for seven thirty Olean Road? Contingent upon, upon receiving the revised site plan.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck. Do I have a second? Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor? I opposed. And that is carried. Now the special use permit resolution. You want me to read all this?
Do you want to read the use? Give me a break?
You want the restrictions, anything we didn't read? Okay. And you guys are good with that? Then I would need a motion to adopt the special use permit resolution for nine thirty Olean Road Rural Outreach Center.
I'll make that motion too.
Motion by Chuck, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Jolene, any discussion? All in favor? I opposed. And that is carried. You're in business. Thank you.
Thank you.
For everything and uh. Okay, let's go back to our agenda here. Anyone wants to speak further to the board from the audience and any items at all? Please come up to the mic. Was there anybody online, Luke, that wants to speak? All right. Then we'll go to business from the board members, and I'll start with you, Luke.
Yeah. You know, the first, the only thing probably for tonight here that I'll bring up is the so this is the, the notes. I think the most important thing was to get actually Chief Krieger over there to take a look. There's some pictures of government down there. I encourage you to go down there. They really cleaned it up. There were working gardens there, the lots that they sold. They're expecting a lot more families next year. I think it is a very good organization that's helping us with that part of the town with that property. And it looks like it's going to be here for the long term. They've got the bylaws. They're all sort of set up properly, just the people who were there.
How many families could it actually have?
It can have quite a few eventually.
I didn't realize that it could have that many, really.
Well, they've, they've got 35 families.
Yeah, they're small parts, you know, plots. Yeah, it's not.
Well, it used to be five or six.
No, that's right.
Thirty-five, and they have already, maybe more. Okay, so 26 families right here, it says.
Yeah.
Twenty existing new families have expressed interest in 2022 so far. So they do have a definitive stop for the gardeners at a certain point so that it doesn't get cleaned up and then the winter is not a big deal. One issue was to try to, well, one issue they have is water. Right now, we're running a line down from one of the, one of the homes. But long term, that's going to be something that they need to look into. But for now, it seems to be working. Roger was there. He didn't have any issues, so that was good. We've got plans. You can take a look through this, and it'll be online as well. The things that they had said, what, what would be, they would like from the town. And I said that it's important to come in every year at least to talk about what the plans are, what they're doing, so they're going to come back, come into the town next spring. One was the culvert pipe. Majors. That is something to be put in, and Chief Krieger said, he said, as long as we have a gate and looked at what their gate option was, and I think that was okay. The cars can't drive through there, but that should be okay. We asked them for a sort of map showing where that would be. That's on Major's property, just to be a culvert they can get through. The second thing was the road down from south, not road, but the, the trail. If there's ever any extra material to throw down on there, because it gets a little washed out. And then the third thing that they wanted to talk about, but that we can talk about next year was signage over by where the Major's Park sort of sign is or, or up on south. I said that they'd have to come forward with their proposals as to what they want to do. We'll talk about it. But in general, a good, good thing, and remember if you remember, we sort of pushed them a little bit last year, year and a half ago. And it does seem like they've really, really cleaned up the property and.
The chickens are gone.
No chickens, yeah. No tents, no, no. Part of temporary accommodations, so.
Getting, getting back to the culvert pipe, that's something we can do because it does improve the park, right?
Yeah, that's a simple project.
Yeah. So there are some.
Drive way, we'll quickly talk about their driveway or our. No, 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 the park, the park, the park.
And then the driveway goes to the Major's Park anyway, so we can do that. But the pipe actually improves Major's Park, so that's something that we could.
They're both, both, they understand that there's going to be no town fund spent on their property. It's that they have the way to get in is either through Majors or through Major's. And the sign obviously would also, just to get more visibility and get more. Those are, those are the things that we spoke about now and that, you know, if you ever want to think about advertising to any families, you know, if anyone has any need for that. But they got the, the fence up. They kept the deer out this year. They had enough water, so.
It's good to see that property pointed in the right direction.
Yeah, yeah. The only other thing trying to mention that's important to get out there is that Spectrum is going to be doing another study on Knox Road. Because the study that came back before was pretty, pretty high. So they're going to look at that again, try to see.
I see they're, he's, they're coming out.
They're coming out, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to get a survey from them of if there's any other dead spots.
We, we've done that, so they're not allowed to publicly show those. But when they showed the map, we went through, and there are no other homes. There is a hole out on Emery where the park is, but there's no homes there. And there's a hole somewhere else, but it's also not affecting any homes at the moment. So we would have 100% coverage if we get this last line taken care of. The big hope here is that the new governor will push forward the programs that have already been promised. And if that happens, then we are the candidate to receive the funds to be able to get that line to go through. Biggest issue that we're going to face, I think, is the town maybe is not even really a town issue, but that there's a private road. So it's a lot of. Accomplishes.
I don't believe we can, we. That would be Spectrum. They'd have to get easements or something.
They'd have to get easements to go through and so maybe working with getting the, having a meeting together to tell them what that's going to tell. But we're working now to get it to the, sort of at least as possible, to get it to the private road. So hoping on funding and trying to get through.
Okay.
I know, and I apologize to anyone who listens to this later. It is a very long process, but trying to.
Now, dealing with Spectrum and. Okay, because I like to talk to them too, because we still need to negotiate a contract.
Yep. Well, I told them that this is a very.
I kind of felt flat with COVID.
They were waiting on the village to sign, and then, but I said that we would, we could negotiate it on. But that this is an important issue, get settled before we.
Anything else?
No, that's good.
Go.
Nothing, thanks.
Yes, I'd like to thank Supervisor Bach and all of those who were involved. Some of the best fireworks that I've ever seen on Saturday. Totally awesome, and I, I appreciate the 13 rockets set off in the beginning to, in recognition of the 13 service members that were, that lost their lives. Twenty-six, I think, I believe that was. That, and it was good to see that the charging station is up and running, and we are charging for the charging station. And I'd like to thank Elizabeth Wobbe for putting all of her efforts, what she did to put that.
And it's actually, it's actually being used every day, and it's making, and it's actually, she's got a spreadsheet now. And it's the exact opposite of what they were saying. It's being used even more. So we just got to see where we sit with carbon air costs. And again, I want to thank, actually Liz from the, or Elaine, I'm sorry, Elaine from REC, because she really did a nice job coordinating that, and Martha helped out with the contract for the, for the fireworks. And I actually called Matt from the fireworks company the other day just to thank him because he, he did a nice job and he went above and beyond. And he says, wait, he says, wait until next year, so I can't wait till next year. That was great, so thanks. Okay, staff reports. Paul, you're hiding back there. You got anything for us? Nothing? Shane?
Just update on some firing. Unfortunately, one of our newest officers just resigned to take a job with the state police. Leaving us a little bit more in a hole. Another officer is retiring this week. And we're just appointed an officer. We have another one, should be appointed in the next couple of weeks. But we're still three stops short, so we're working on that. They'll just still, and you guys are aware, working on a possibility of a school resource officer. So we're just trying to get up to Manning. We had another officer hurt himself off duty and be out, he'll be out for three to four months. So it's just, it's one after another right now. But we're, we're, knock on wood, still finding good quality candidates out there. So we'll just keep. But doing a lot of training in the next several months, so.
Anything else? Liz?
I just wanted to say thank you for creating the assistant, the part-time position. We're looking forward to having Paul Keelik on board. He came highly recommended. Thank you, Dave. And we're excited to have him there. I've known him for quite some time. So, so, you know, we already have a, you know, an understanding of each other, and he's ready to get started, I think. So we'll see him tomorrow morning. So thank you.
Good.
That's all I have.
Okay.
No, I don't have anything to report tonight.
Stop hiding around that corner.
I could barely see. Donna?
We had an open house today. It was great. It was nice to see a lot of new faces in the community that we haven't seen before. It felt really good after last year doing our curbside pickup. You know, we passed our bags and stuff, so it's, it's just so nice to see people. And people are happy to be back and stuff, so it was a good day.
Great. Did you get with, did you talk to Donna about getting prices?
I did not, yes.
Okay, because I have to get back to Paul on the prices for the touchless faucets and all that.
I was under the impression that he was going to do all that.
So you saw the email. I forwarded the email, didn't I?
I did see.
It said that he was looking for
Okay.
prices on that and the air quality machine or something.
Because originally I thought the way it made it sound like he was going to get all the centers out together and go through that process, so.
If, if there's any, if you want to call him.
Yeah, no, I, he probably, that's probably the way they wound up doing it. So maybe tomorrow, tomorrow, the next day, we could.
Sure.
Look at it. I just want to make sure that we don't miss out on anything.
Yep, yeah. Good. Dave?
I'd just let you know, Walton Blackwood had his race last weekend. That's the third one, and they had almost 1,000 kids there. And with all the changes over the past three years, everything wasn't really well. All the traffic parents are working on it right here.
Yep.
So hopefully, we'll be incorporating a lot of those things right in the border lines this weekend. Chief came up with a great plan to close off the east side of Knox Road for the weekend. All traffic, it will only be the best breed of bicycle. We have to stay out and try to report on that to Advertiser. There's some people out of the border lines, people put you out of the village cars. So I think, actually, I think it's a really good idea, so it's going to be a little different. And also, two Jim came up for the 400 today. We moved the wise, we got all the equipment down off the bank into the creek. Get a little breakdown tomorrow, so we're not going to start branding on Wednesday. Just a park is missing for. And if a board member did want to come up there, it is a safe work zone in the shoulder. But if you do, just make sure you're in front of the grid.
Okay. In front of it.
You got to drive up the creek. We clean the half. Zone does stay up 24 hours a day, so you know it's, it's going to be up throughout the whole day. So it's a, it's a, we'll keep that speed.
Yeah, they got quite a bit done in the.
They actually got it kind of done. Actually, I think it's going to be better.
Yeah. Yeah.
It actually went much better. And if anything, it's like this, you're talking 7,000 pounds of tractor. Slid half of it, but it needed to tear it wild out.
Getting it out, Mike.
And they said they could use the whole kind of push the thing. So it was a, if anybody could lock them down, they would say.
Thanks. Tony?
Nothing for today.
Good night. Thank you, everybody. Great. Motion to approve the abstract. Watch my Luke. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I. Poses, carried. And motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Julie. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Chuck. All in favor?
I.
Posed. As carried. Thank you, everybody.